Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's finance meeting. So, we're going to start this meeting off with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I have a motion for approval of the minutes for the September 10, 2019 Finance Committee meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. G., seconded by Mr. Fusco. Are there any comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up is a public comment. And in order to meet the requirements of Pennsylvania sunshine law, it is necessary to record the names of all citizens who speak to the committee during the meeting. To ensure compliance with this requirement, it is essential that those planning to address the committee come to the microphone, state their name and address, and sign the audience of citizens' logbook. Members of the audience are asked to limit their questions and comments. To allow time for all those who wish to speak to the board, the committee chair may ask an individual to yield the microphone to the next speaker. Mr. Patchell.
My name is William Patchell. I live at 404 Bonnie Lane in Lansdale. It's really Montgomery Township. What I want to talk to us about is revenue sources as the Finance Committee, and this is the most challenging part of the entire system, finding enough dollars around to satisfy what everybody would presume as being the priority project for the district. Some people academics, some people sports. The one thing I would like to do is make a comment on the funding source and the revenue stream that's coming along down to our tax collectors. The number of row homes, the number of units, the number of new things being built, I'm pretty astounded. I said, "Boy, perhaps that money could find their way." And I said, "The assessment for those buildings," I said, "I'm sure they go between $350,000 and $400,000 by the time somebody moves in." So I thought you might look at that very, very seriously about that part of the revenue stream. The number of those paying the earned income tax, maybe what it would be a good idea, maybe just .15 we could add to the earned income tax. The senior citizens are really, really put upon. I mean, $162,000 for $262 million, that almost doesn't even qualify as pocket lint. And perhaps some new revenue source, perhaps a small, a small, small sales tax directed for education. You are putting added revenue into the capital improvement budget. And then, when we get so much together, there was a woman speaking before the board. She says, "I know you people. Yeah, we couldn't get the air conditioners. Now, all of a sudden, we found $12 million," or whatever it was, "for Crawford Stadium." Only, I don't know, the football team uses it. I guess there's 100. It is declining. And we have, so you can't be putting these little capital thing, "Oh, we got $8 million in there now. We're going to fund what we like." We have musical instruments to purchase. If this can, if this contract went up 20% a year, you will find, will you fund Crawford Stadium with, with a likewise amount over the last time we bought these musical instruments? Kristin Johnson explained to me how this works. And when you say, "Mr. Costa, done right," I don't know what "done right" means. Done right means we need $12 million because you know the prevailing wage, and you know that it's a union contract. If you can keep up with that stratospheric rocket, you'll be really lucky. You won't get a backdoor on a high school, trust me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patchell. Six seconds to spare.
You're getting good.
Is there anyone else that would like to make public comment? Okay. Seeing none, then we will move on to items recommended for work session in action. First up would be the LURDA request.
Thank you, Mrs. Stoll. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we have a presentation from Globus Medical. I'd ask Mr. Renner, you're the Director of Tax, correct, for Globus Medical? And Mr. Bowen from Stevens &amp; Lee, going to make a presentation regarding their LURDA request for a property located on Stump Road in Montgomery Township. So, the presentation is included in board docs, and we'll also have it on the screen. Gentlemen, welcome.
Thank you for having us. My name is Matt Renner. Again, I'm the Director of Tax of Globus Medical. I'll give you a little bit of background about Globus Medical, and then Tom will speak a little bit more on the LURDA process. So I'll start off with kind of our mission statement, to become the predominant muscular-skeletal company in the world by developing products that promote healing in patients with musculoskeletal So our company was founded in 2003. We've been growing exponentially since then. We went public in 2013. We have about 180 products out in the market, mostly around the spinal degenerative disease from a spinal standpoint. We operate in all 50 states and internationally, in about 30 countries, both through subsidiaries and a distribution network. We have current guidance of about almost $800 million in revenue for 2019. We have about $600 million in cash, and we are currently debt-free. So, as I said, we pretty much started out as a spinal implant company. In order to continue our growth and expansion, we introduced a robot to the market in, at the end of 2017, and we're expanding into trauma in hips and knees as well. So one of the main drivers for us to, to add to our growth is we've been a, we work very close with our PD department, our product development department. We try to keep that department very close to our manufacturing end, so they can work hand-in-hand. It helps us get our products to market faster than our competition. So that's been one of the contributing factors to our growth. So here's just some examples of some of our products, mostly from a spinal standpoint. Some of the evolution of our products over time. This graph basically shows really all of our sales force throughout the United States and where they're all located. Currently, we have over 1,800 employees worldwide, both from a sales, product development, manufacturing. Let's skip past that one. So this one just shows a little bit about a robot. If you like, you can read in more detail. I'm not going to get in for, from a time standpoint, but it kind of gives you a little bit of illustration of kind of what our robot looks like. So from a growth standpoint, we're planning or we're looking to grow to about $1 billion in revenue for 2020. Most of that driven through, you know, expansion in spine or robotic, and then expansion in new business and acquisitions, things of that nature. One thing to note here, so this gives you a kind of a good picture of one of our current manufacturing facilities. We have some clean rooms as well. That's the picture on the left, the manufacturing facilities on the right. Currently, we're producing about 50% of our product in-house. And when I say "product," really our implants. We do outsource a lot of our instrumentation. So kind of our expansion plan. So what we're looking to do, because we're growing so, so quick, so fast, our headquarters is in Audubon, PA, and we've pretty much outgrown all of the facilities we have there. We have four buildings, pretty much within a five-mile-square radius of ourselves, and we're pretty much outgrown them. So we've been looking in Berks County, Limerick, and this particular building on Stump Road as potential places for us to grow and expand into. Part of the reason is, you know, we've outgrown the building, and other reason is we're, we've, for the most part, exhausted the workforce from a manufacturing standpoint within the current location we're in. So we're looking to expand a little bit further from our comfort zone of a five-mile-square radius to somewhere out further, but still keeping that, that product development engine close by to continue to get our product to market faster. So, a little bit about the, one of the facilities we're looking at, 425 Stump Roads, approximately 170,000 square feet. Again, we're looking to make this facility 100% manufacturing. In order to do so, we envision some renovations that we need to do. This slide shows $5 million of spend immediately to over the next handful of years. We just received word today because we are in, you know, we have been looking at this building for a little bit, and through our due diligence phase, the building's going to need a new roof, and that's currently estimated about $1,500,000. So I would increase our spend to about $6,500,000. Some of the changes we need to do in order to manufacture there, electrical upgrades, ventilation, HVAC, looking to expand the parking lot for more employees within that facility. And there's existing office space, you know, we're looking to modernize and potentially, you know, fix up that area. So what we envision is pretty much immediately, or at least once we're able to move into the building that we can start to manufacture, we relocate approximately 150 employees from our Audubon facility to this location with the goal of increasing those employees anywhere between 150 to 250 new employees over the new, or over the next three years. Their starting salary ranges would be between $30,000 and $150,000, depending on what they, their job descriptions are and some of the background, the skills that they come with. You know, we offer health, dental, vision, 401K, stock options, life insurance. So just a little bit more detail around some of our, you know, the direct jobs we're looking to bring in. So again, you know, relocating about 150, creating approximately 240 more, which we're estimating, of all of those employees of the 390, we're estimating approximately, using a 15% rate, approximately 59 of those employees could be located in the school district. You know, so the direct compensation ranging from $7,500,000 for the relocated, $12.2 for the newly created jobs, and potentially up to $3 million for those folks who are currently located within the school district. I'll pass it over to Tom.
Yes, thank you. And thank you, Madam President, and members of the board. And thank you, Mrs. Crocker. He's been very courteous in short timeframe getting this information to you. Thank you for his feedback to us. So on the indirect jobs, we're getting into kind of the multiplier impact, and I just wanted to briefly share with you about that. I'm a tax attorney and do LURDA projects in a number of jurisdictions around the Commonwealth. And manufacturing are, is usually the, especially advanced manufacturing, advanced technology like this tends to be the most attractive in terms of enticing companies to stay or come, whether it's the governor's action team, and we are working with them at the state level, or with local governments. We find warehousing projects, I've been doing quite a few of those because they seem to be popping up a lot. There's some interest in those. Retail, not so much. The retail projects I've been involved in have been tax increment financing, TIF, when there's public infrastructure needed. But I mention those three because the medical equipment and supply industry has a very strong multiplier, which means for every direct job, there's going to be indirect jobs. And those are, many economists look at this for different organizations. And so, for example, coming up with the numbers we have here, we use rather conservative numbers of 1.67 is the indirect jobs, and that's from the U.S. Bureau of Economic Analysis. And it was done actually for a medical device council in another location, but they were looking to strengthen the economic engine of that industry, which is very strong. And other analysis, and we have a one-pager that we provided to you as well, and we have a site to a rather thorough study on, on the different multiplier effects. And manufacturing has three, about three times the multiplier effect as a, and that's on the second bullet, and the third, small bullet, under the second, big bullet. And so, the wholesale retail, I mean, so wholesale warehousing is, it's about three times as much for manufacturing. And then for retail, it's like six times in terms of the impact. Now, what we don't show on here is induced jobs, there's indirect jobs, there's induced jobs. Induced jobs kind of takes it to the next level based on the spend of the people who work there and the suppliers who are served. And that's a little bit more difficult to quantify, so we try to be very conservative in these numbers. And so, the, what I think is really exciting, oh, I'm going to take it back to the presentation. Thank you, Chris. So I think what's really exciting about this project is it's really going to drive new tax revenue for the school district, increasing your tax base, which I know didn't increase as much as you would like in the prior fiscal year. And as a former school director in a public school district in Lancaster County, I know how precious that is when you can add to the tax base and not add to your costs. And that's what this does. So, we projected out the property tax revenue based on the, actually it was $5 million of improvements. Now, we're looking at $6,500,000. So these numbers actually are very conservative, but we're looking at additional of $1.1 million. And I looked at it over the construction period, and there won't be really new revenues during that period until you have the completion of the improvements and it's reassessed, and then the first 20 years. I think 20 years is a, it's a pretty good number to use in terms of likelihood of being, operating, at least for that timeframe. And so, but earned income tax is another add to your tax base. And we're estimating on a rather, I think, pretty conservative 15% figuring, 15% of the campus employees that are working here would live in the school district, maybe not all immediately, but over time. Some already do live in the district. And so, that's $300,000 based on your .5% on the resident income. And then you have an immediate opportunity on the validity transfer tax should this company buy this property and close on it in this, which, in this current fiscal year, which hopefully would be the case. And by the second year under LURDA, you would actually see an increase on property tax. Now, LURDA does not reduce the property tax. You're not looking, we're not asking to give anything away in terms of revenue. We're talking about all new school revenue for you. And so, we projected, again, out of the 22-year period, and we looked at the current use, if nothing changes, and we took a conservative view of just their static millage rate. We didn't build any increase in your millage rate. We simply took your current millage rate and assumed that the buyer-owner would pay it within the 2% discount period. And the alternative use is the strongest use of the three that we're sharing here. Now, we're speculating that an alternative use would be warehousing. That's what this property was used by Harriet Carter Gifts. It was warehousing with a small office and small retail, I think they had a little bit of outlet retail operation there, but it was primarily warehouse. It's a fairly old building. It was built in 1970. There's been no building permits let in as many years as we can figure out from the township. And so, the warehouse might have some improvements, but their EIT would be much lower, their revenues, their salary levels are much, much lower. And the other alternative use potentially is a housing development. There is housing development bordering the property. There's a church right next to the property at 427 Stump Road, and then just north of the church, and on the northeast side of the property, there's a housing development. Not to say that that would be likely, but it's a potential. It would have to require a zoning change there. So, don't want to scare you with that possibility, but it's always a possibility when you have a growing area. So, LURDA, you've been through this before. I don't need to go through this, I don't too much, but I'd be glad to entertain questions. The one thing that might be different here is the school, the township, Matt and his colleague, Rob Miller, made a presentation to this township just a couple of weeks ago, and they wanted to get your feedback before they approved the LURDA ordinance. I've run into this twice before, once in Lower Salford Township on a manufacturing project that was the first time ever for that township. They wanted to go to the Sauterton Area School District, which we did, and we had the school district approve a memorandum of understanding. A memorandum of understanding is not a legal resolution of approving the LURDA because the way LURDA works, the township needs to officially act first. But this is a way to show your interest and intent to support this project. We would then go back to the township with the MOU, like we did with Lower Salford a few years ago, and then Lower, we expect that Montgomery Township, based on your meeting was very positive, would approve a ordinance for this three-parcel property, and we're expecting they would approve a 10-year sliding scale exemption. So that's the one might be different from the last two projects you did. So the last slide, and, and I appreciate your liberty of giving us a little more time here, that LURDA has been used, of course, in this district, which is a real plus in terms of understanding, and at least five other school districts in the county. And one of them is Spring Ford. I note that because one of the properties they're looking at as an alternative is Limerick Township, which is in the Spring Ford area school district. This site that looking at is the one they really would like. I mean, that's the most interesting to them. But they do have interest, and they do have offers out for a property in Limerick Township, and also in Mullenburg Township, just north of Redding. And Mullenburg School District and Mullenburg Township are coterminous, and the township actually has all commercial industrial properties designated as LURDA, and the school district has approved, I'm aware, that's come before that school board. So, we're asking for something similar, obviously.
About three years ago. So with that, our request is that this Finance Committee would recommend to the full board for adoption, ideally on the October 17 meeting, the MOU. We did provide a draft.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did I do that? I apologize. Sorry. So, I have a strong voice, so that helps, but the, so this, the, I was saying, the MOU, if that could be approved at next board, your board meeting on the 17th of October, then we could go back to the township. They have to have a public hearing, which requires a two-week notice, and we would anticipate they would have their first meeting in November to approve the ordinance and resolution, and then we would come back to the school board at your November meeting, and hopefully the sequencing would work. They're in the process of due diligence, as Matt indicated, and they would really like to make a decision by Thanksgiving because they really want to, they're running, they've run out of space. They want to make a decision, and they do have two other active prospects. So we hope this is the one they'll choose. The MOU does indicate that it's conditioned on certain things, including an agreement of sale that would be entered into with the owner. We're waiting on a offer from the state, which they told us they're going to make an offer as soon as they know which property is the property we should designate to the Commonwealth. And we don't expect land use problems. You went to the township already. We expect they will approve modifications necessary to build the building. So we don't think any of the conditions will be difficult, but we do ask for your participation. And if there's any questions, Matt and I will try to answer them.
Thank you for the presentation. I do have a couple of questions and a little context, because we have, as you pointed out, approved a LURDA fairly recently. It wasn't a 10-year declining. It was an arrangement that was on a much shorter scale. I'm curious, though, about the Audubon facility to start. How long have you, first of all, for clarity, are you going to be using this facility, whichever, wherever you go, in lieu of that Audubon facility? It's not in addition to. It is, you're going to be closing that and moving? No, correct. We're expanding. So corporate headquarters will stay in Audubon. It'll stay. We're just looking to be able to grow into all the rest of our building. So we expand some manufacturing, so there'll be more of the heavy-duty manufacturing, if you will, like, once we have our products, we know, you know, we worked out all the kinks. We're at market, they're going to be doing the mass production, mass producing at the 425 location, and we will then keep the local manufacturing to work closely in product development. Right. I mean, your business clearly is expanding rapidly, and we certainly wouldn't want to have you come in and within eight years, you know, be gone. Sure. I mean, we've, we've been at the Audubon location, I believe, since 2005. We started with the one facility, expanded right next door, wound up buying a sister company that's within five miles away that's fully manufacturing. We actually just bought another building within the same complex in December of last year, which we're currently looking to move more of a logistics shipping and receiving over to that facility. So, we, we did joke for a while that we're looking to basically buy the entire corporate complex, correct? Because we've already got three buildings within it and one right by. But from a business standpoint and more of a labor standpoint, we need to sort of move out of the same location to access more pools. And so, I appreciate that you come right out and say that this is for economic development, and you're not trying to associate it with the letter of the intent as it's written of LURDA. And the state does grant taxing authorities an awful lot of latitude in making determinations about, you know, what kind of property can and will fit, I guess, an internal definition of a need. I'm probably, and I'm only speaking for myself, more in the camp of being open to the idea of economic development LURDAs. But that being said, the timeline that you're presenting tonight, if this board is nothing else, we are a pretty deliberative body. You know, we would certainly be, we would need to hear other timeframes that you would be willing to consider. Not to say that we wouldn't consider the 10, but certainly what else would be on the table. You know, there would need to be some deliberation here. Because honestly, unlike the former LURDA, that building, I believe, remained vacant for, what, 10 years, 12 years, something like that? The one in Hatfield Township was on the market over 25 years. Yeah. So, you know, there is, there is clearly a difference there, even though that, that still, I think, fit the economic development model, there was also a very strong desire in the Talminson-Hatfield community to have something done with that land, as it's been sitting there. So, I, time, the timing of it may be a bit of a stretch tonight, but I personally am interested in learning a little more about the project, and I'm interested in what it is that your company does. I think that you do make a fairly compelling case about the use, about the expanded economic development that a business such as yours could bring to that facility in comparison to what other types of businesses may be interested in such a facility. But I certainly would like to hear more from my fellow board members and their thoughts on it.
In terms of the, I, I would echo Mr. Fusco in the sense that we typically need a little more time than just this one meeting to really be able to talk further about the details of the project. How long has, is, did Harriet Carter, is it, they're no longer there, or how long has the building been? I didn't see that.
Yeah, I think earlier this year, the building was vacant.
Okay. So it really, it's just been vacated?
I think it was about February.
Yeah, short, short term.
There was a, one of those notices that they have to give to the government, I think it was in January, February, they pretty much shut down. They also had an operation in Bucks County, and they shut that down as well.
I'm interested in your, in your projections, and this is something I'm sure that Mr. Scrocki will be able to provide some, enlighten us on, once we have a chance to kind of wrap our minds around this. Your projections seem pretty robust, like ambitious, like I think $6 million in earned income taxes. But perhaps, I mean, I would be interested in learning more about that part, Mr. Scrocki. Is that really realistic? That, I see the $3.5 million, which we would see as property taxes, yes, that's, but the $6 million in earned income taxes could or could not happen based on if we meet that 15% benchmark, which we may or may not. And is there evidence of that in other areas where this has occurred for the purpose of economic development? Is there evidence that that 15% is, I see where they got the information, but I want to know more about that.
Yeah, I actually think that 15% might be a conservative number. And speaking with Merck and also with Turn 14, who developed that parcel, that LURDA in Hatfield Township, they were citing numbers much higher in terms of the geography of individuals, where they reside relative to their workplace. So, I would say if it comes to fruition that 150 jobs are relocated and 240 are created, I think those numbers are very realistic in terms of earned income. So it'll be up to Globus to follow through, though, to make sure that 240 jobs are created and 150 are relocated. So, if that does come to fruition, I do believe that $3 million and the $300,000 then that would come to the school district is very realistic in earned income tax.
Just to let, just to let you know, the number we used, and correct me if I'm wrong on this map, right? I think we used $50,000 salary.
Average salary.
Average salary, $50,000 times the .005, times the 15%, times the 20 years. I believe that's how we came up with the numbers. I have an Excel spreadsheet I'd be glad to send to Mrs. Scrocki. And on that, I just want to address two of the time questions. First of all, on the timing in terms of acting, in terms of how quickly we're trying to get you to act. And I appreciate being deliberative. I don't like to be pushed either, and when I was on the school board, I didn't appreciate that. And, you know, it's, part of it is because they're in the decision-making process of due diligence, and part of the issue is the cost of doing business that place A, B, and C. And we've also met with the folks in New Jersey. We don't have a site there in particular, but we're trying to do our best in a short timeframe, and that's, and I appreciate what you're up against. But that's what they're up against. So just so you have an appreciation. And the other thing, too, one nice thing about this, you already have a base of property tax that's not going to go away. Most of my LURDA projects that I've worked on, it's greenfield projects, like the one in Sauterton area, goes back several years now, but it was, and it's public information. Almac has been a tremendous success over there, and it was a 40-acre former farmland, basically. And we struggled, not struggled, but there were questions because the township had never had a LURDA, and trying to look at the definition of deteriorated area. But again, the courts have been very lenient, if you will, in looking at the local taxing jurisdictions on how they define economically undesirable, or, you know, if it's economically better in doing something else, that's almost enough. But, in any event, most of the projects I've worked on, they start with almost a zero tax base, and then they, you know, had this hope and promise that they would have. Here, you have a pretty, you have $117,000, at least you're getting a year on this property. On the timeline, in terms of the 10 years, and Mrs. Scrocki very kindly alerted us that you may, some members of the board may have concerns about that. And certainly, and I don't mean to sound silly here, but if you went to five years and had a similar present value analysis, you know, value proposition to the company, if you went five years, 100% exemption, that would be 50% over 10 years versus 55% exemption. If you do the math on the 10-year weighted, or average, a pure average is 55% of the exemption over 10 years. So if you did five years for 100%, that would be 50%. It would actually mean less to the company, but because it would be front-loaded, they would accept that. That has the benefit of administration. You're administering the program for five instead of 10 years. And in terms of, if you have a concern about doing something that you're binding a future board with, five years is not as, you know, as much as 10 years would be. So, we would be open to a shorter period of time. I have a real hard time, though, when we have two other sites that, we haven't gone before them yet, but based on history, we would expect no, no issue of getting 10 years in either Limerick Township, or that, we know that Mullenberg is almost, is a done deal. Just another comment I want to make about, and Matt knows this better than I do, about labor availability. That's a real issue, is skilled labor and machinists. And I tell you, anything you can do in this school district, and they want to help you with it, is to develop more machinists. Not everybody is meant to go to college, and if you're able to and you've got the skills, that's great. But many have skills that are really, really needed in welding and machining. And so, they're kind of run out of availability down in that neck of the woods. Here, they're hoping to draw on Bucks County, your area, Bucks County, Allentown. Hopefully, many will be drawn to this area. The reason they're looking at Redding, you're looking at north of Redding, so the Burke, Burke County, all the way to Skulco County. So we're looking at expanding the workforce, and that's why, one of the reasons why this is a very attractive site. But again, I hope that explains kind of where we're at in terms of competitiveness. And yeah, it's an economic competitive situation. And they have choices. And we want to make this the best choice.
So I appreciate the fact that our school district and, you know, with Montgomery Township being recognized as a top, as a select area for businesses to be located. I think it's important for many other businesses to recognize that. We appreciate you bringing that to the forefront. In terms of my colleagues, I, as Mrs. Scrocki already warned you, yeah, we'd like to see maybe some, what those numbers would mean. We still need to deliberate. I'm absolutely open to this LURDA, though admittedly, this is different when we have a company with $600 million already in hand compared to a district which, you know, were projected to be in deficit year after year. You're familiar with the situation. I personally, as one school board member, if I'm voting for this LURDA, still have to have in my mind, not only the precedent that we're setting, but understanding that, you know, there's, they're for-profit businesses, they're for a reason, due diligence happens, there's economic competition. But as one school board member, I have to take it very seriously, the definition of LURDA and what that means to me, in my interpretation of that. So I'm not saying I'm voting against, but I'm being just as transparent as you've been as well. I feel that it's a bit of the chicken or the egg when it comes down to the MOU and the township. I have no problem with you coming to us first and being forthright in providing that. Admittedly, it means a lot. I don't see my position as a school board member, you know, in terms of LURDA, it's very narrowly defined. Whether the township actually wants that economic development based on traffic, population, and everything else, I admit it, you know, I also like to know that those conversations are occurring and, you know, what Montgomery Township also believes.
And I know, Matt, without the beating, I'll just, I know that, that one of the reasons I believe they came here, why Lower Salford did the same in my other situation, was because they recognized that the millage rate is obviously much, much higher here in the, in the school district, especially with Montgomery Township, which has the lowest millage of all the four municipalities in your district. So, they were doing it, I would say, out of deference, not to try to pressure you because they felt that, because their contribution is going to be the lowest. That's the main.
And I didn't take it as pressure. I'm being honest, too, in our cycle, that in my deliberation, I do want to understand Montgomery Township's position as to what this really means. That, just being upfront.
Yeah, I mean, the board meeting that we went to, they seemed very open and receptive to it. Again, as Tom said, because they're not as affected by LURDA as the school board would be, or the school district would be. They were looking to get your thoughts first, effectively.
How about the parking and the traffic issues?
There was no, they didn't bring any concern about parking or traffic. I know our building management folks have been talking to the township about, you know, the potential changes that we would like to make to the, to the building and parking, because I think currently there's, I think only about 180, give or take, parking spaces at the current facility. And if we have up to 300, 400 people there at a time, there's definitely not enough parking. I heard Harriet Carter had an arrangement with the church next door that they were able to use, I guess during the week, the parking lot. So, so as far as I'm aware, there haven't been any major issues or pushback from the township on what we were looking to do.
And I assume, Mr. Scrocki, you'll be able to have that outreach. And I don't mean to make you explain or justify it and trust it face value, just being upfront that, you know, to me, that's something I want to make sure we understand, you know, Montgomery Township, the direction that they're headed in as well.
Yeah. And Mr. Casse, I did speak with the township manager, Montgomery Township, and basically corroborates everything that was mentioned tonight. The township is interested, but they're pretty much at this point deferring to the school board, since we have a larger financial stake in this.
And my last question, I was really focused when I read this earlier, on your bullet there about looking forward to continuing the tradition of community participation in partnership with the district. Can you describe what that would look like?
So what we've done recently is we've reached out, so more of our manufacturing side have reached out to the school, just, school districts in our area, Methacton, and kind of brought some, some, you know, high school kids in, gave them some tours, kind of shown them around, you know, in a partial effort to, you know, kind of get them excited and interested in kind of manufacturing and what, you know, what Globus can, can bring for them, you know?
And so this will be my last comment. I'm very interested in that. However, is a board member having to make a decision on this? I think it'd be, it'd be very helpful to actually, right, if there's an MOU that we're going to sign, what is it, something that codifies a bit more, right, doesn't hold you to anything? But I think, is one board member, I'd really like to know, what does that mean long-term? That's interesting. But we need to hear a little bit more information on that partnership.
If I could sneak two questions in here as well. Gentlemen, you're moving 150 skilled machinists to the area from your previous plant, and I'm wondering what types of jobs you think would be calculated in that number of 59 direct jobs and, was it 89 indirect jobs? What kind of, 90? Thank you. What kind of jobs are we talking about for North Penn residents in that case?
I mean, I think it can vary at the end of the day. You know, we have guys that basically just fix the machines, if you will. So that's maybe more on the lower end of the pay scale, up to, you know, directors of manufacturing.
Right. You've listed a lot of numbers and a lot of benefits. I wanted to make sure that those jobs would include those benefits most, in most cases.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Meaning, meaning 401K and stuff of that nature.
Right. You listed health, dental, vision, 401K, all that good stuff.
We offer that to all employees.
Great. My second.
Every, every level of employee gets, gets stock.
Right.
Stock options when they, when they, when they're first hired.
Good. Thank you. My question, my last question, has to do with the business that you're in. I'm in education, so I don't really understand too much about the devices that you're creating.
Okay.
I'm not sure if they are the type of devices that are absolutely necessary for certain medical conditions, or if they are a bit of a luxury. And I'm wondering how durable your business is if a recession were to come over the next three or four years?
I think we're pretty durable. Meaning, you know, so our bread and butter, spinal implants. I mean, maybe you can say it's a luxury, but I think most people that have spinal issues, you know, scoliosis, you know, your vertebrae, granted, I'm no doctor, so I can't speak, you know, that lingo. But effectively, if your vertebrae's, you know, pushing into your spinal cord because you no longer have cartilage in between there and you're effectively going paralyzed, I think that's maybe more of a necessity than a luxury. You know, insurance covers it, so it's, it's not that only the rich are able to buy our products. So it's really, you know, as you're, as you get older, you know, gravity starts pushing on your spine, so it starts compressing, so there's products that, you know, open up the spine, products that fuse the spine together.
Right. Okay.
All, all different types of products.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Sure.
So one thing, Matt, you may want to do is, I'm speaking for yourself, for you, but they have a demonstration room or a product, kind of a showroom, if you will, at their headquarters. It's very impressive. And again, somebody who doesn't know all this stuff, is going through that with a technical person, and they could provide that to the school members who would be interested, I think, in having that, to learn more about the product. And also, I think another point about the, that's a very good question about, you know, how durable, recession-proof. And one of the things that's really great is their diversification of their customers, they're worldwide. I remember telling, telling us that Japanese are like a very large buyer of your product.
Second largest market, so US and then Japan.
And, you know, with the elderly population worldwide, and certainly in Japan and this country, I would expect that we would see increased just demographic demand for the product.
I'm wondering, oh, sorry, Terry. I'm wondering to what extent, since we're talking about economic development, what type of outreach do you do to ensure that we hit that 15% in terms, I mean, in terms of other areas, or, I mean, you know, do you have job fairs? Do you have, what do you do to ensure that you are reaching North Penn School District residents and that it isn't just people driving? I mean, we're, that's right, that area's right off of 309. You could certainly drive up from Philly or down from Quakertown. So I'm just wondering, you know, what do we do, or what would be your plans in terms of making sure that we are reaching out to our North Penn School District residents so that, you know, we at least would hit that 60 mark? I would hope that maybe even more direct jobs would come from our residents.
Sure. I think our VP of Manufacturing, who's not here tonight, could probably speak more to that, but I'll speak based on my knowledge of speaking with him. So I know, we have had job fairs at our current facility in Autobahn. I believe we just had one a week or two ago. So, you know, with the goal of, hey, if somebody comes in and, you know, they meet a certain, you know, criteria, we're looking to hire them on the spot. So I wouldn't, I would foresee that happening in this new location as well. As, and as mentioned previously, that we have worked with the local school, schools, bringing in groups, technical groups. I think there's a technical Montgomery County Technical School, I believe, working with, you know, those schools and, you know, trying to bring, you know, the youth in, showing what they can learn and do, and, you know, try to inspire them to, you know, come to Globus.
I just wanted to address the, very good question from Mr. Casse, about, you look at their financials and you see the $600 million, you know, debt-free, et cetera. And just a couple of comments. One is, one of the reasons they are successful is they really do watch their bottom line, and their shareholders are wanting them to continue to do that. So, one reason companies can be successful is that they're always looking to produce good quality at the lowest price. So, when we look at different sites, there's a lot of factors. There's labor availability, there's the building itself, is it workable? And then certainly the cost of doing business. So, that's where we're at tonight, is the cost of doing business, partly. Also, the attractiveness of the labor availability and so forth. So, that's one answer. The other answer is that they have choices. And an advanced technology company, especially one that has no debt, that's going to be around for a while, you know, a real stable company, they have choices. And so, to make your place the most attractive choice, sometimes you have to do something to give, if you will, an incentive to attract that company here rather than there. This isn't Amazon, but you could use the same analogy, because their balance sheet's really strong, and yet companies, cities were putting a lot more than we're asking for to bring, and of course, they're talking about different dynamics in terms of numbers. But it's, it's part of the fact that they have choices. This is an attractive site, but it's not the only site.
And I'm sorry, Ms. Pukowski, I just make sure. Thank you very much. I'm very impressed by what I've learned about the company. So, but I think for taxpayers and for our district, I just want to make sure that I asked that question. And my personal philosophy, and part of the reason why I ran to serve my community, is that, you know, I've got my master's in political science, and I could bring up the examples of stadiums and the race to the bottle, bottom. And the one thing I won't be as a school board representative is getting into some race to compete for, you know, throwing away our, you know, our... race to compete for, you know, throwing away our, you know, our economic opportunities simply to compete with another district who wants to do the same. So, that, I'm just not going to take that competition aspect. I'm still very open to this LERTA, but I just want to be clear with you, that's not something that is going to work on me.
May I?
Yes, you may.
Go ahead. I'm sorry. Please. I don't want to, please.
The Audubon plant is not the only one, correct?
No. So, we have, like I said, three buildings in Audubon and right next door Eaglesville is a manufacturing.
And I'm talking that as one.
Facility, okay. And we have a manufacturing facility in Massachusetts and office R&amp;D manufacturing down in Texas as well.
And are any of those plants unioned?
None are unioned. And I'll add, basically, the reason we have those two facilities are where they were acquisitions. So, the Massachusetts, we acquired robotic technology for which we went to market back in the end of 2017. And Texas, they manufacture tissue implants, so human tissue for implant purposes. So, we acquired them back in 2014. So, that's really why we have those locations.
But is your labor force unionized?
No, nowhere.
Okay. And your intention for Montgomeryville?
I don't believe so. That conversation hasn't come up, so I don't believe we would.
Thank you.
All right. Is there any more questions?
I could also add to the director's comment on the location. One of the things that's really exciting is that they don't have any manufacturing facilities outside the United States and they export outside of the United States. And one of the neat stories about this company is it was founded by an Indian, a man from India, and he is so patriotic, he puts red, white, and blue on his symbol. He loves America. And I've never met him, but I've heard wonderful things about this man. But he wants everything, if he can, manufactured in the US of A and sends it to Japan and elsewhere. That is a cool story. It gets me excited. But, yeah, and so, just, I want to go back on the race about, I don't want you to do that. What I, what I want you to, one of the things, something that's amazing to me is this company, I think, why they've been successful and they watch their dollars, they look at reusing a building. That's unusual. My experience with manufacturing facilities is more like the Elmac situation where they look for a greenfield and they build it to their specs. And that's another positive possibility, but they're looking, they look for existing facilities here that takes some real work. You're talking about a warehouse that hasn't had hardly anything done to it since 1970. The one in Mullenberg Township's like 650,000 square feet, they're going to, obviously, we have to sublease it to others, and that's a big distribution center. So, they are willing to take something that might be a white elephant and make it a diamond, I mean, in the rough. That's unusual. My experience, and I've been doing, been tax law over 30 years, but in economic development, I was in a Fortune 300 company in the 1980s, I got involved in this, and it's highly unusual. I just say that. So, you have a real gem as an opportunity. And when you look at the impact as a school director, you're talking about almost immediate increase in revenue. You're talking about no deduction, no reduction in revenue, none whatsoever. You're talking about increases and immediately on the sale with the realty transfer tax, but then within a year, we're hoping by the end of one year, if they can get all the construction, you're talking about EIT immediate, and then you're going to, by the, our proposal, second year, you're getting property tax increase. We're not asking to take anything away. We're asking you to have an opportunity to add to your tax base. So, I'll get off my soapbox, but I think this is a wonderful opportunity for you and I would just ask you to consider our request. I know we're asking a lot in terms of timing, but again, we're faced with the reality of what we're faced with in terms of due diligence.
All right. Any further questions?
I was just going to say that I think, and this is for actually you folks, that these LERTA requests tend to be a very philosophical discussion point for us. You know, there's inherent issues of fairness. We have obviously a lot of business owners in this community. You know, granting LERTAs allows obviously those who have come at the right time, with the right situation, opportunities that others who are already established don't have available to them. At the same time, I do also think we have to keep in mind the financial benefits that come with programs like this in terms of how it affects our district's bottom line, especially when we consider, there's, this is our only avenue of revenue generation is taxation. And we have, as Mr. Skrocky pointed out last year, a sizable and growing structural deficit. And we have all said that we would like to try to consider out-of-the-box thinking on these types of matters. And I think that, you know, looking at the LERTA requests and for economic development purposes is certainly one vehicle for consideration doing that. So, I just think that we should keep that in mind, that there is the philosophical, but then there is also the bottom line. And, you know, and at this point, I am open to, if it's not going to cost the district any money, certainly avenues like this for consideration.
Well, Mr. Renner and Mr. Bowen, you can see that we are very deliberative, so it will take a little bit for us to make our decision, quite frankly, okay? So, thank you for making your presentation and we'll let you know.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
If there's anything, Mrs. Skrocky, you would need from me, just let me know and we can get you a data.
Absolutely. Thank you for coming.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Thank you.
So, one just final, this is more for Steve. To continue the discussion, and I mean, I know we have, we can always ask you for back information, would we need to move that to work session to continue the discussion so that we don't have to wait until the next finance or?
You certainly may, because the next Finance Committee meeting isn't until November 12th.
Right. So, do we need to move to, do we need to make a motion to move that to?
To work session?
Work session so that we can continue the discussion?
It could be work session or it could be, the request they were making was to have it at, excuse me, next Thursday's action meeting. So, you can move it to the action meeting or you can move it to the November work session. Now, November work session, actually, the Finance Committee meeting in November precedes the work session, so they're both on November 12th.
That might be a good time to do it.
Would that be just the MOU during action meeting?
That could be, or it could be for full approval.
We could add the work session vote for full approval, correct?
We could add.
We just did it at our last work session with two items, so it could happen.
So, I was going to move to...
Well, I'm going to get that clarification.
Yeah, I just wanted to double-check on the process, okay? You cannot vote on a resolution, that would be the exemption resolution, until the township has acted first. So, you could vote on the MOU, you know, anytime, but it's got, the township is asking, now they didn't specifically ask for a MOU. So, if there was an indication that a majority of the School Board would support a LERTA, then I believe the township would feel at liberty to go ahead. The MOU, we didn't actually, I don't think we discussed it, we met with the township as far as process.
They didn't mention the MOU in particular, but they basically wanted written confirmation of your, the board's desire.
And then it still comes back to us after it goes to the township?
Yeah, the township, what the township does, they, under the LERTA statute, they have to enact an ordinance after a public hearing. The public hearing is typically held a half an hour before the vote. That's my experience. So, the township would have a public hearing and that would be advertised, and they have, I believe it's two weeks, two successive newspaper ads, which makes it two weeks. And then the township votes for an ordinance, and they typically will vote an ordinance which simply defines the district of the three parcels that we're asking for, the district. They don't, in the ordinance, specify the exemption. And then the township typically will vote on an exemption at the same meeting. So, they have public hearing, ordinance adoption, resolution. Bingo. One after the other typically at township. And then, once they've adopted the ordinance, even before they did, if they did the resolution, they could do that separately, but the ordinance has to be in place before the School District or the county can take action on an exemption resolution. So, that's the legal process, which is kind of why the dilemma of, well, they want the School Board to act first, but legally, this township has to act first, so the MOU is that kind of way of doing that.
And I feel like that's actually, again, to your benefit, because echoing Mr. Koss' comments earlier, I am also preferring to hear what these townships want, because I know that if the township is opposed to it, then, you know, I wouldn't obviously have any interest anyway for, you know, traffic and whatever other concerns that they would have in mind. So, it's still kind of enough of a process in front of us. I actually would be comfortable to move forward with the MOU tonight and allow this to play out, and we still would have time, I would think, to deliberate.
The MOU is...
It's non-binding.
It's non-binding, but it is a strong indication to the township that we are, that we are, as a majority, okay with it. And then for them to, if it comes, for them to then vote on it and then it come back to us, and then we say, well, no, we've kind of changed our mind, not that we would, I'm just wondering, could we move it to work session or weren't you saying we could add a work?
Work session is, you just said work session the same evening as finance.
Same night, yeah.
It's the same night, so it's not any sooner.
Oh, could we move the MOU to action just to, I guess that would be work session?
I would...
What's your advice, Steve?
I would say half the board is not here tonight, though.
Right, right.
So, I don't think that it'd be proper to make a decision.
Well, two of those members are going to be...
I understand, but still.
And the township at this point, what they're looking for is, they are supportive of the project, but they want to know, does the majority of the board support granting LERTA? Because I think it'll be perfunctory for them to get their ordinance in place, and then they'll be looking for us to actually grant the LERTA once the ordinance is placed. So, that's what they're looking for. They're not going to do, and speaking with the Township Manager, they're not going to do anything else until they hear from us. A little bit different from the one we had in Tolu Menzen Township, because the board of supervisors there went forward with the ordinance, not knowing how the School District was going to take a position on the LERTA. They moved forward anyway, regardless. In this particular case, the township is deferring to the School Board, and they're really not going to do anything with respect to that ordinance until they hear from us.
I would personally feel doing an MOU tonight, even if it's non-binding, being kind of pushed.
Yeah, I'm in agreement, Pat. I was thinking that we could move it, didn't we hold a work session prior to an action, I don't know, two meetings ago, in order to provide us an opportunity to discuss? We've done that before.
The calendar's lined up, we agree. Okay.
I would prefer not to vote straight to the MOU this evening. I feel like I need a moment to think about it, but would like the opportunity to continue the discussion as I'm open to it.
So, can we make a motion to move it to works, to the finance meeting then, night, and then to the work session?
So, we have, we have finance on November 12th at 6:00.
Right.
And then after that, I think it's at 7:30, we have the work session then, that same evening on November 12th. So, it can be an agenda item on the Finance Committee meeting. At that point, if the majority of the board wants to move it to work session, we could have a further discussion of that same work session.
And to your point, Mr. Fusco, by then, that'll be post-election, so we will know who's on the board at the time.
Well, I was suggesting that the current members, regardless of the election, will not be here, so.
Right. Yeah.
What's it?
In November, we got a call.
In a month, yeah.
And then in terms of timeline, let's just speculate and say that the board would support the MOU. We send that to the township November 13th. So, the township then would have an opportunity to follow the process that was outlined. Then presumably, at the December meeting, then the board could take formal resolution on the LERTA if it moves in that direction. I would assume the township would be able to expedite this process from November 12th until, let me see, when the, our December action meeting is on December 12th? So, the question is, would they be able to expedite this during the November 12th to December 12th time period to actually establish the ordinance, so this board could consider the actual resolution then on December 12th?
Yeah, we'll have to look at the dates. I think they will. I mean, they seem to be very supportive. And, you know, even this discussion tonight, I didn't, unless I've heard otherwise, I didn't hear anybody opposing the LERTA. They may not, we may not have, you know, 10 years, 10% or something less than that, but at least I heard nobody opposing the LERTA for this project. So, we have, what, six out of nine School Board members, is that right, a public meeting? And so, if Mr. Gregan, you know, the Township Manager, got a call from you, Steve, I know he knows you, and, or, but if it came from you, maybe better than from us, that what you heard tonight, and perhaps that would be enough, even though they don't have a written MOU, to proceed with the advertising of an ordinance and the public hearing, and they may not feel comfortable in doing it until after November 12th, but if we can get the process going sooner rather than later, I mean, I think your drop-dead date is around Thanksgiving.
Close to that point, yes.
Isn't that right? So, it's possible that we could still pull this off and make a decision. I feel pretty good what I heard tonight, and at least I don't, you know, I think we can go back and feel that at least the School Board is probably going to support some sort of LERTA. But maybe that's, if you could, if you could maybe call the manager and let him know what your thoughts are on this meeting and...
And I would do that at the direction of the board. I would need to hear your feedback that, you know, if there's a, an interest, there's a further interest, you know, obviously non-committal, I would do whatever the board desires. And then they may, they may still wait until formal action is taken anyway with respect to an MOU or...
At the end of the day, honestly, just between us with all the dates going back and forth, I want to make sure, no matter what our decision is, you know, there's, there is a timeline, as much as, you know, I prefer, you know, that we not be forced into that decision. You've got a business and you're due diligence. We want to be friendly to business and make sure that we can make a decision that, should the district decide to approve the LERTA and take advantage of that and have a win-win situation, I just want to make sure it falls within the right timeline. And so long as that's the case, I don't care whether it's an MOU or action meeting or pass a note between study hall. Right. I just want to know that structurally, the timeline's okay.
Yeah, if, to Ms. Stole's concern, if the MOU is a little more formal, then this is at least less formal, and I think that they understand that we are putting the ball in their court, you know, by doing it this way. So, I would certainly support you reaching out and communicating this conversation and your thoughts on it to them.
And just going back to the Tolu Menzen situation, if they would move forward and pass an ordinance, that doesn't bind the board to anything or commit the board to anything, because that's exactly what happened in Tolu Menzen Township with the supervisors there not knowing what the outcome at the board level was going to be at that point in time.
Okay, so, you're going to call then the Montgomery Township Manager?
Yes.
Okay. I'll see how it goes from there.
Yes, and then we'll have this item on the 11-12 Finance Committee meeting and then the work session as well.
Okay. That sounds good.
And then we may ask for your presence at one of those two meetings, okay?
Just a question, then, if you proceed like that, and if the work session would be indicating support, when would the action meeting then be on the LERTA resolution itself?
So, at the work session, the board can take action, so the MOU could be approved on November 12th presumably, if that's the board's desire. And then the formal resolution, then that would be, I would see that running through our solicitor, that would happen on December 12th.
December 12th would be the next?
Yes, for the actual resolution.
Okay. I wasn't, you didn't have another November action meeting after the 12th, then?
No, no. Well, right. Well, the 12th is the work session, and then we have an action meeting on the 21st. I'm not sure if that's ample time for our solicitor to formalize the resolution or not, because, so we have the meeting on the 12th, and then our agenda's released a mere three days later on the 15th for that following week's meeting.
Well, just a thought there, and we can deal with the details, but I would certainly be happy to, we have a sample MOU, you saw. I also have sample ordinance, we haven't even presented to the township, but, you know, we can provide that quickly, and also a sample resolution for the School Board, which would be identical to the resolution for the county and for the township. So, in terms of working with the solicitor, I would be happy to provide drafts of that even before your meeting, if you would grant me, if you would grant the solicitor the scope that he could review it even before then. Again, I know you need direction from your board, but I'd be happy to get all the ducks in a row in terms of drafting of documents, so we don't have a delay just because of drafting, you know, review issue.
You can send me the draft resolution, that would be fine. I think the critical component here that we discussed tonight is going to be the length of... I think the critical component here that we discussed tonight is gonna be the length of the LERTA. I think that will continue to be a point of discussion. So, that part will be, you know, you can submit a draft, but even what you proposed about five years, 0% for each of the five years, I didn't hear any commitment to that. I didn't hear a commitment to the 10 years, so I think that's something that'll be a point of discussion at the November 12th meeting as well.
I'll make sure it's in Word versions, so you can make changes. I'll just give you a small comment about how this dynamic can work. At the Soudersen area school district, and this goes back several years, but at the meeting, when they adopted the resolution, they were, they did a 10-year, but we adjusted the numbers because of a construction project they had going on. So, it wasn't a, it wasn't 10, you know, it wasn't 10, 20, 30, it was like 10, 25, and then 35 and 40. It was, I can send you that. I mean, it's public stuff, but they did an adjustment. And as it turned out, at the end of the day, it worked actually favorably to our client. They actually got a better deal, but it worked good for the school board, because they were able to time the exemption with a school construction project, so they could count the revenues a little different, you know, differently. And it worked out, it was a win-win situ, we're talking about win-win, it was a win-win situation, but it wasn't a straight, like I normally see, 10, you know, 90 down, 100 down to 10. So, we're flexible on those kind of things. We just want to make sure this is as competitive as the, as the other two choices that they have. But I'll send you the draft, and that can be adjusted. And if you want to have that reviewed ahead of time, and I'd be happy to entertain comments from the solicitor, so we can get the drafting issues, the period and the percentage, that can be changed. It's a policy decision of the board, but in terms of illegality and so forth, you know, we can certainly handle all that. So, that's all done and ready. So, the only question is, is what the period and what the percentage is. And then, hopefully, you could do that on the 21st. That's what I'm trying to think, if we can get that on the 21st, and we can get the school, I gotta look at the township's calendar if we can pull this off. So, I'll have to come back to you on timing.
It might be helpful, too. I'll email you the resolution that our board passed for the LERTA that was recently approved in Towomacson Township.
Wonderful. I do have the one that you did for the auto parts, the, I have that one that you did with Hadfield. I believe I have that, but the other one, I don't have the most recent one you did.
I'll send that to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again for the presentation.
Thank you again.
Let's not make our informational items an hour and a half long.
As I told Mrs. Stoll earlier today, we're looking at a half-hour meeting tonight, right?
What did I say?
And Mrs. Stoll's response was, you just jinxed it, right? There goes the half.
Dutch thing with this group.
Told you.
Okay, so, informational items. Just want to give you an update on the bond refunding that the board approved moving forward with. A couple of key dates, on Thursday, we have the Moody's rating call. Right now, our bonds are rated at AA1. Obviously, we're gonna make a big push to have a rating upgrade to AAA that will truly put us in elite status in terms of other school districts in Pennsylvania. There's only a few in Pennsylvania have a AAA state, status. And I think we're pretty close after the last ratings call that we had, when we borrowed $10 million for the second phase of Nap Elementary School. So, we're gonna shoot for it. We're gonna ask for it. We think we have a compelling reason to get the upgrade. Does go through a committee. There's an analyst that's on the call, and then he submits the information to a committee. But that would pay huge dividends for the school district, not necessarily for this refunding, because it's a pretty small refunding, but moving forward. It's more difficult to get upgraded to that higher level. It's more difficult there than it is to maintain it moving forward. Also, then, the bond sale date is set for October 22nd at 11:00 a.m., so you're welcome to attend that. We'll put that up on the screen. You're welcome to come in here. It's like an eBay auction in reverse. It's kind of interesting that the bond underwriters are all competing. They get the lowest proposal, and then the lowest proposal wins. So, it's pretty interesting to see. Also, an update on the estimated savings. Last month, we presented to you that the net savings would be approximately $506,000, and the board resolution said, "Well, if we have $100,000 in savings or more, we would move forward." I'm happy to report that today's estimated savings are $543,000, so about $40,000 higher than we were last month. So, that's good news. So, that probably won't change too much, hopefully, unless there's some sort of major change in the, in the bond market over the next couple of weeks, but we're looking at about $543,000 in savings. Just a reminder, we do need to make a cash contribution that would come out of this year's budgetary reserve, but the net savings over the life is still the $543,000 net savings. Onto the next informational item, tax collector audit. Just to let you know, we select two tax collectors each year to undergo an audit. This year was Montgomery Township in Line Lexington, and we did receive those reports back. They're posted under executive content, and everything was fine with the audits. There were no concerns. The testing was done by our local auditors. They tested transactions. They took a look at timeliness of deposits, things of that nature. No issues, no internal control concerns, everything tied out. So, we're happy to report that. We actually asked them to do a third one this year with Lansdale Borough. That is not complete yet. And there's a change. A lot of times, we select which municipality to undergo the audit when there's a change in tax collector. So, there was a change in tax collector in Lansdale Borough, so we asked them to take a look at a third one this year, too. That should be ready in a couple of weeks, but happy to report that there's no issues. In terms of the financial reports, I do have a summary on the financial reports. I think the one report to highlight is on the investment income. The Fed did cut rates for a second time this fiscal year at their last meeting, and the probability built into the market for another 25 basis point cut when they meet on October 30th is pretty high. I think it's close to about 60%, so we could have another interest rate reduction. That one will impact our budget, because we won't meet our budget target if we have another interest rate reduction. And there's actually a pretty strong probability that there might be two further cuts yet this calendar year. So, we're closely watching that, and we're concerned that we might not be able to meet our investment income budget. And that's important, because in the past couple of years, we've greatly exceeded our investment income budget. It's actually added to our bottom line to the tune of about $1 million plus each of the past two years. So, we're gonna continue to closely watch that, and hopefully, the Fed won't follow through with what's projected in the marketplace.
Hopefully.
Pardon me, I brought back a little airplane cold, I think, from my return trip to Germany. So, that's basically it on the financial reports. Be happy to answer any questions, or Kristen will answer the questions. I can't talk.
Does anyone have any questions?
Good luck on the call, Mr. Scrocky.
Yes, thank you. Okay. If no one has any questions for Mr. Scrocky, then I guess we'll move on to the second public comment.
Once again, my name is Wayne Patzler. I won't go through my address. But that was the most fantastic presentation. I can only think that that gentleman, who was with him, was Glenn Curtis in Hammondport, New York, explaining how I'm gonna go from motorcycles to airplanes. And that was an amazing story, which, and you're very lucky, that they would even pick out. And I know, I picked out Montgomery Township 28 years ago, 'cause I knew what? It was well-run. It was a fantastic police department, and one of the highest effective police departments in the country. If you have no security, you have really nothing, okay? It's better than stainless appliances, trust me. And I said, "It had a wonderful school system. It had forward-looking and sustainable planning. This is very important." But the exciting thing about this presentation, and you need to support this, I don't usually get really excited about this kind of stuff, but I'm telling you what, that is, that was the greatest opportunity that ever fell through the door. And you need to vote this and give them as much help as you can. We have a wonderful resource here. Let's think about, "Oh, Monco Technical." Yeah, "Why don't you guys dedicate for computer, computer-operated machining? Hey, we'll get you a job over on Stump Road." Wow, this is really fantastic. And it's going to be a clean plant, a green plant? Wow, what more do you want? And it's going to provide an attraction for Merck? Is, well, we're actually starting to turn into be a lighthouse and an epicenter to attract medical devices. This is the most forward-looking place that really a lot of companies, and when they talk about what a bond in Berks County, you don't want to put a plant in the middle of a cow pasture. There's nothing gonna happen in that place. So, Mr. Casa, I have to congratulate you. That was really wonderful. That's very supportive. And Mr. Fusco, you're very supportive, and I can tell by the feeling of the board, this will be a tremendous contribution. It will help take the pressure off the senior citizen. I might actually even might sell my house to one of these executives if I want to move into Montgomery Township and ride a bicycle.
You're trying to sweeten the pot, sir.
That was a great, I told that gentleman, I said, "Oh, you must be Glenn Curtis." Thank you so much.
You know that promise was on camera, right?
I don't know. I don't know what.
All right, if there's no one else with any public comment, do I have a motion to adjourn?
No move.
Okay, thank you.